Let's open the October 16th meeting of the East Long Meadow Planning Board. And I need to announce that under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20E, we are making a video recording of this meeting and also an audio recording for the minutes. And I would ask if anyone else here is recording the meeting? Hearing none, we can proceed. We have the entire board here. We have, do we have the minutes of October 2nd?
No, that's what I had, I mean, I sent them.
For our approval.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, are there any comments or changes to the minutes of October 2nd? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain because I wasn't here.
Okay, that's good. First item on the agenda is Hidden Ponds Estates. We've received a request from the applicant to continue this discussion to the 20th of November. And so that's what we will do. We do not have all of the required information from the applicant yet. The next one is 855 Summers Road, Donna's Daycare Service.
Case number SPRW 2018-24, 855 Summers Road, Donna's Daycare Service, request by applicant for a site plan waiver for a family daycare located at 855 Summers Road, Assessors Parcel ID 95-4-6, in Residential A zoning district. Applicant is Donna P. Quinn, 855 Summers Road, East Long Meadow, Mass.
And on this one, I, we consulted again with the building commissioner. This does require a special permit, and therefore also a site plan. So I would recommend that we vote to not waive this. So I'll ask for a motion to waive, and then we can...
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, so a yes vote means you want to give the waiver, a no vote means you don't. And I recommend that we don't because it does require a special permit under the bylaw. All those in favor? All those opposed?
Aye.
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 Okay, better.
That's a no vote.
Okay, so let's unanimous. Next one is 100 Shaker Road, Atrium Dental Group.
Case number SPRW 2018-25, 100 Shaker Road, Atrium Dental Group, request by applicant for a site plan waiver for a dental office located at 100 Shaker Road, Assessors Parcel ID 28-10-A, in the business zoning district. Applicant is Thomas...
Sean.
Excuse me?
Sean.
Sean. 34 East Greenwich Road, Long Meadow, Mass.
Thank you. So this is an existing business, they have a site plan approved for the site, and they need the waiver for their business.
So I just have a question.
Yeah.
So essentially, we, when a business location turns over...
Yeah.
They're supposed to come in for a waiver of a site plan.
Right.
What is the timing, or what should be the timing?
Well, the timing usually is when they go for their business certificate.
Okay.
Okay, which they normally require in order to get funding. Okay, something that banks require.
So how long has this been actually up and running at 100 Shaker Road?
Atrium has been running there for several years.
Okay.
Okay. Whether it was under this particular applicant or not, I don't remember. Oh yeah, please. If you, come forward and speak to the microphone, identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Thomas Shawn, I'm the business owner. So I've actually been there for almost a decade. I've had two previous business certificates, and then when I went to reapply this time, somehow my zoning waiver has been lost under the town. So they said I have to come back and reapply for a new zoning waiver.
Okay.
So I have two previous business certificates for already the past over eight years, and now I have to do this because I don't know what happened in the town.
Okay.
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 So, business is normal for me.
Yep.
Perfect?
Okay.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay. John, be, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that passes.
So I just have a question. So you're all set?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So for those that have, are up and running, but haven't come through the process...
Right.
So, how do we handle those? Who cites them? Is there a citing process?
No, the, prior to establishing the procedure for business certificate, okay, it would, there's nothing that forced someone to apply for a waiver, even though it's required. Okay? And we don't keep track of every business in town. So what happened was a few years ago, a new procedure was put in that said someone who's applying for a business certificate first has to have the approval of the planning board, which is why it's going the way it is. And this is current procedure. So since you need a business certificate usually to get a loan, then this starts the process. They come to us, and then they go back for the business certificate. Okay? But yeah, there are businesses in town that are running that have never received a waiver, okay? And they're under the radar screen because they didn't need a business certificate, even though it's supposed to have one. Okay? I mean, this is, this is life.
So do they just stay under the radar?
They do until they need a business certificate. And there are probably a lot of businesses running out of people's houses that don't need a business certificate. Yeah.
So you don't need a license to drive a car unless you get stopped by the police?
Basically, yeah. That's true.
Okay. I don't recommend doing that.
I don't either.
I don't recommend these guys doing it either. Thank you. Thank you, George.
So the next one we have is Alternative Wellness Office.
Case number SPRW 2018-26, 51 Prospect Street, Life Flow Wellness, request by applicant for a site plan waiver for alternative wellness facility located at 51 Prospect Street, Assessors Parcel ID 27-154A-A, in the Residential C zoning district. Applicant is Nancy Allen at 56 Hunt Street, Agawam, Mass.
Okay, this one is a little bit more complicated. It's in a residence zone, but it has been a business since at least the early 70s. Okay? It was never regularized, if you will. So we have asked the applicant to petition for a change of zone for that particular parcel, since it's been used as a business for, like I say, since the 70s. It was originally part of a parcel on Shaker Road, and it was divided through an A&R. And how it ended up residential after that, I'm not sure, because it was business. Okay? But anyway, that's the way it is right now. So the recommendation is that we approve the waiver, subject to the zone change going through. And that's going to take a while, because it has to go to town council, then come back to us, and then go to, go to town council again. So the, I don't see any reason why the town council would not approve it, but, you know, the point being that this is, this waiver is contingent on the eventual change of the zone to the proper zone. Okay? So do I have a motion to approve the waiver of site plan, contingent on the zone change being approved?
By the town council?
So moved. Yeah. You have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good. This will get that parcel back to where it's not iffy anymore.
Connie, what's going up on?
Oh, sure. I didn't touch it.
Preservation mode. I don't know what that means. I should just touch it.
You dropped the call.
Yeah, I don't know how, but we did.
Well, thank you for calling me back.
Okay.
What'd I miss?
We're up to...
We're almost done.
We just did number four, and...
Okay.
I'm going to request that we take number six, which is the sign permit for this particular parcel, out of order and do that next.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, you want to go to the sign permit?
Yep. Case signed 2018-18, 51 Prospect Street, Life Flow Wellness, request by applicant for approval of a new sign at 51 Prospect Street, Assessors Parcel ID 27-154A-A, Residential C zoning district. Applicant is Nancy Allen, 56 Hunt Street, Agawam.
This is the sign, I have the picture of the sign.
Yeah.
Do you want to see it again? So do we want to do a contingent upon the zone change?
No, I don't think so, because of the waiver. If they don't have the waiver, then they can't have business.
They're not going to want to spend the money on the sign without the waiver.
Yeah.
Probably.
Yeah.
Good point, though.
Do I have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Oh, George, if I may, will you make sure you sign all of these, these applications?
Yes, I will.
Or I would have to... Perfect, thank you so much.
Even though, even though it says Director of Planning and Community Development, I put Chair after my name.
That's fine, I just, nobody's going to be able to read my signature for a while.
Though they can't remind me, wait.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's, next thing we have is A&R?
Number five. Case A&R, 2018-03, Professional Office Building at 124 Shaker Road, a request for endorsement of a plan for which approval is not required for a .47 plus or minus acre site located at 124 Shaker Road, Assessors Parcel ID 28A-3-69 and 28A-4A-71, in the business zoning district. Applicant is Ventry Properties LLC, 73 Chestnut Street, Springfield, Mass.
Do we have a plan for this one, Tracy? Is anyone here to address this?
Yes, I am. My name is Daniel Garvey, I have a residence at 64 South Brook Road, New South Meadow, Massachusetts.
Okay.
I'm not sure if this makes sense to perhaps continue this item to item 13, because it also involves a site plan request for a property.
Well, we, we can't do the site plan until we approve the A&R.
Sure.
If you could just explain to everybody what we're doing?
Yep. So what you have before you is an A&R plan to actually combine two pieces of property. The property is located at 124 Shaker Road here in town. The abutters to this property are the Animal Hospital, the parking lot to the Animal Hospital, Acres Power Equipment. It's also abutted by Shaker Road and Bond Avenue.
Mm-hmm.
On the other side of this, Bond Avenue is Connecticut Valley Artisan. It's the old Hafey's Funeral Home, which is now a karate studio. So what we're asking the committee to do is to combine two pieces of property. The major piece of property is approximately .4 acres, and that's owned by Tom Verratti, who also was a town resident and also owns Contest at the end of Bond Avenue. And the piece in front of it, where you see the old sign, that's actually owned by the owners of Connecticut Valley. So I have a purchase and sale agreement to purchase both parcels of property, and the intention is to ask this committee for permission to build a 3,800 square foot single family, or single story professional office building.
Right. So we have the frontage necessary for this, which is the only real requirement for an A&R, is, is frontage. So we have that. Building Commissioner has determined that the frontage includes the frontage on both streets combined. So his number is not to endorse it. Do I have a motion to endorse?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on that?
Yes?
Yes?
Um, yes. So I would like the title box to be amended to read Plan of Land at Shaker Road and Bond Avenue for clarity, because it simply reads Plan of Land in East Long Meadow. So when we go to search this 50 years from now, it's going to be a lot easier to find Plan of Land at Shaker Road and Bond Avenue. So just the title box to be amended, and then we can have you come in, and you can sign it administratively, and they'll be good to go.
Okay, so the endorsement is contingent on our getting a plan with that title box change?
My engineers here will make sure that that gets done and submitted to the town tomorrow.
Very good.
Some point tomorrow.
Very good. Have you said that?
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, this is one of those things, you have to do them in order.
Understood. So can we do 13 now, then? Get out of order?
That's what they want.
You want to do that?
Yeah.
Okay, and we'll take 13 out of order, since you're here and we're...
Motion?
Do I have a motion to take 13?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Case, site, 2018-06, Professional Office Building at 124 Shaker Road, request for site plan approval for a proposed professional office building at .47 plus or minus acre site located at 124 Shaker Road, Assessors Parcel ID 28A-3-69 and 28A-4A-71, in the business zoning district. Applicant is Ventry Properties LLC, 73 Chestnut Street, Springfield, Mass.
Okay.
Good evening, A&R. My name is Daniel Garvey, I have a residence at 64 South Brook Road here in town. With me is Don Fredericks, who is a professional engineer, and he's a principal of Sherman and Fredericks, which again is a professional engineering firm located at 3 Pounder Street in Paulville, Massachusetts. What I'm asking the board to consider is to allow for the construction of a 3,800 square foot office building located at 124 Shaker Road here in town. To kind of give you an idea of where we're talking about, again, as I mentioned before in the A&R discussion, this is the parking lot for the Animal Hospital, this is Acres Power Equipment, I believe this is Hand and Engineering. Across the street, again, is Connecticut Valley Artisan Well, and that's the old Hafey Funeral Home, which I think is a karate studio now. And directly over here is a number of businesses, I believe there's a hairdresser, a printing shop, and also the pizza shop. So that'll kind of give you an idea of where we are in town. So again, what we're asking for is permission to build a 3,800 square foot professional office building. And as you can see here, what we're asking for is the building itself to be up towards the corner of Shaker Road and Bond Avenue, with the entrances being off of Bond Avenue. What we have here is we have a building that's going to be basically two separate spaces. The front space will be approximately 1,500 square feet, and that's where I plan to relocate my business, my law business, and my real estate business. And the second piece will be for rental for another professional office. So again, the building will be in the front of the property, and the parking will be in the rear. As you can see, there's the required 19 parking spaces according to the town. We have a dedicated entrance and kind of a loop around and a dedicated exit. Again, all entrance and exits will come off of Bond Avenue, which is a side street. There'll be no traffic coming in or out of Shaker Road. I've also submitted for your consideration a lighting plan, which shows that the lights that are proposed here, there will be the wall packs and the lights, the light poles, they will not cascade lighting onto any adjacent properties. Also in the pack is a landscape design that was done by John Henson, who is a licensed and registered land architect, and that's in your packet for consideration. What we're proposing, as I mentioned, is a basically a 3,800 square foot...
Sorry, you already built it.
Professional office building. I bought one, built one similar to it last year, and brought that just for exterior materials. But the architect that I do use is Siegfried Porth out of East Hampton, so as required by our ordinances, I did give you all the elevations. So the west elevation is the elevation that you're going to see from Shaker Road. There is a two-foot amp out, which I thought was important, because that's what you're going to see from Shaker Road. The south elevation is where the entrance and exits are going to be coming from. Those entrances and exits will abut Bond Avenue. The north elevation is the elevation that will be adjacent to the Animal Hospital's parking lot, and the east elevation is going to be the elevation that's adjacent to the parking lot that you saw before. This is kind of just to give you an idea of the exterior materials that are required by our ordinance. So this is a building that I built last year in Ludlow, and the reason I put it up here is this is a building which shows you what the brick is going to be. So the entire building is going to be bricked with SWB brick. This property that we built is 7,200 square feet, my proposal is actually half of this building. This will kind of give you an idea of the two entrances, so there'll be covered entrances, there'll be bricks around it. And this will also give you an idea of the windows and the doors, there'll be white aluminum doors. And you'll also see the eaves and the gutters will be a brown, which kind of gives you, kind of blends a little better than the white gutters with the SWB brick. And that's just a close-up of the SWB brick. So that's what we're proposing, to build an office, single-story, 3,800 square foot office building located at 124 Shaker Road.
Okay, now, the, it's been pointed out that the bylaw restricts a building to 25% of the lot.
Mm-hmm.
How does that work with this square footage you've got?
So that would be on our front page, and maybe I'll ask Don to answer that question, but I do believe that we're at 25% maximum, where our building is 18.8%.
Okay, because our staff thinks that that, that 25% is, we're going to be here. Connie, you still there?
I'm here.
Okay, we're looking at this one for the 25%, and they, they do meet that, right?
So, we looked at the maximum lot coverage in the business zoning district, the maximum lot coverage is 60% of the total lot. So the area of the proposed development should reflect such touch regulations, and therefore the maximum lot coverage allowed is the 20,450 square foot site, 60% of that is 12,270 square feet. So that's the maximum lot coverage. But then in concert with the maximum lot coverage of 60%, as per section 3.332 lot coverage, the building area should not exceed 25% of the lot area. That 60% that we're dealing with, 12,270 square feet. So when we take that 12,270 square feet and we subtract 3,67.50 square feet structure, we have a remainder of 9,202.50. So the building is a little bit larger than, than what is, is allowed under our current bylaw. So we look to see that the building be reduced. And if I look further on down in my cheat sheet, the applicant proposes a 3,800 square foot structure, it should be no greater than 3,067.50. So it's a little bit larger than we allow under our bylaw.
Can you address that?
Excuse me, I'm trying to do some quick math of 25% for the building coverage, but the lots, 20,450 square feet, 25% would be at least 5,000 square feet.
No, no, we're only allowed to use 60% of that total square footage.
Well, yeah, we, we know that, but the way the bylaw is written, okay, it says the building area shall not exceed 25% of the lot area, not of the coverage area.
But you're, you're working within, yeah, but don't forget, we're actually moving, we're, it's so, the way that ordinance, the way the bylaw is written, I hear what, I hear what the applicant is saying, but again, the maximum lot coverage is 60%. So within that 60%, you're working with the 25% that's allowed.
I, I disagree. I disagree with that. The bylaw says specifically, the building area shall not exceed 25% of the lot area. It doesn't say of the coverage area. So 25% of the entire lot, as long as only 60% of the lot is covered.
It's the way that the bylaw is written, because you also have to take into consideration the green space calculation, the...
Right, but we're talking about building size here. We lost her again.
Green bar.
What's the green bar?
Yeah, it'll redial. Can I do it again?
Yeah. Okay.
Now it should dial. It says in call, so it sounded like something's happening.
You know, the phone lines, she's with the phone lines at the town. So you have to take a look at section 3.332.
I am.
So, okay.
And it says, it says building area shall not exceed 25% of the lot area.
There's a difference between a building area and a, a structure. So again, the way I interpret it, the maximum lot coverage is 60%.
Yes.
So you can't, you have to leave 40% green permeable. So in looking at that, you're only dealing with, you're dealing with a lesser, a lesser amount of land. You're not dealing with 100% that you can actually construct on, and that's why I see this building as being too large for what is allowed in this business zoning district.
I, I think you're misinterpreting this. It says specifically lot area, and that's the way we've always looked at it before, is the lot area. Means 25%, if it covers 25% of that, the building covers 25%, then you've got an additional 35% that can be covered with other things like parking. So it, 60% covers the building and everything else. The building calculation is based on the size of the lot, not the size of the coverage area. That's the way it's written, and that's the way...
No.
That's the way it's written, and that's the way we've always done it.
You should be mindful that 75% of the remaining total, 60%, is the maximum area permitted by right for parking and other impermeable services.
Where does it say that?
So...
Where does it say that?
Look in 3.332.
I am.
Okay, so, but again, if you do your math, you do your math, it's, we're not dealing with 100% of...
Yes, we are.
12,000, or 20,450 square feet.
Excuse me. I, I disagree with you completely on that, and I, I am going to rule that we, this, this bylaw says 25% of the lot area, not the coverage area. And 25% of the lot areas is what the building can cover. There's nothing in here about 75% of the remaining total. Okay? It's not written here, nowhere. So .25 times... What do we have here? Total of...
20,450.
Yeah. 20,000?
450.
450. Yeah, it's a 5,000 square foot building, yeah. So you're well within that.
Right.
Now, as to the 60% lot coverage, is that also shown on the, on the plan at the start?
I don't have the rigs with me, I don't know if you can read the lot coverage definition just so I...
Ah, sure, that would be under the, let's see, this is...
322?
Yeah. That would be, no, it's not 332. It's in the table under B, Commercial Business. Here we go. It's Table 3.2, any permitted use, okay, maximum... All right, that can't be right. The maximum lot coverage for the building is 25%. It doesn't say anything about the...
Well, maximum lot coverage is maximum lot coverage of all this, okay.
This is the dimensional requirements. I'm trying to figure out where you got the 60% from, Connie.
Go to... Go to 3.33, Business District.
Yep. There's nothing in there about 60%. There's a buffer strip if it's next to a residential district, which this is not. But there's nothing in there about 60%.
So, Mr. Chairman, you, you've ruled about what your belief is the bylaw says. The building complies with the 25% requirement, well within those parameters.
Yep.
Are there other issues that we should be addressing?
Uh...
There's some small notations from the planning staff.
There's some small notations from the planning staff, um, let's see.
Essentially corrections on the plan.
Yeah, yeah.
Have you seen those?
I have not seen them.
I can give you a copy right here. Most of it is administrative.
I received the department comments from Building, DPW, Fire, Police, Recreation, and Health. There's been no issues. This is the first I've heard that there's issues with planning.
Can I ask some questions?
Sure.
So, so if it were approved tonight, how soon would you begin construction?
I'm trying to get the foundation in before the snow flies.
So you're going to relocate your law practice and your real estate practice. So the second parcel, or the second part of the building?
Yes.
What type of activities do you, let's say, in your Ludlow building that you built?
Yes. So there's office space, we rent to doctors, we have a home healthcare office. Those are the four tenants that we have over there. And what I'm looking for is either another attorney, maybe an engineering firm, but again, it's very restricted what I can put in there. It's going to be office that has to be compatible with, obviously, my office.
Sure. And can you just quickly go into some of the, so it's my understanding that lot is very wet?
Yes.
So what are some of the things you're going to put into place for the drainage?
So there, you're doing such a great job, so.
All right, ahead.
And what was, while he's doing it, so what's your anticipated hours of operation for both sites? I know it's a professional building.
Yeah, I usually get to the office at 7:00, and I unfortunately leave about 6:00. So it will be somewhere between 7:00, no later than 7:00.
And do you have, so because you're adjacent to really a heavy retail area with the pizza shop and no small, are you going to restrict parking in your building site from people who might be using the other retail? I mean, how are you going to handle that?
Unfortunately, yes. I think I'm going to have to. I have a total of 19 spaces. I think my office operation will probably take four, and then clients will maybe take another two, three. So that leaves about 11 for my other space, so I think I will have to restrict parking to only those people who are either visiting my office or the...
Yeah, I don't know if you know, so what is the parking, are there parking restrictions on Bond Street? Do we know, are we aware of?
No.
No? Okay.
It is kind of narrow, though.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
I wouldn't anticipate anyone parking on Bond Avenue.
Okay, good.
So for the drainage system, as you mentioned, this area back here is low. It actually has a low area that's depressed. If it, in our drainage report, if it was to not infiltrate everything during the existing conditions, it actually backflowed out into Bond Avenue. There is a catch basin here that it cut to out into the town's drainage system. Based on the evaluation of the existing drainage system in the roads, we designed a system that does not allow drainage to go into those systems, because my understanding is that there's been drainage problems throughout this area. Based on our, our test pits that were in this area, we did have groundwater at...
Two feet?
Three feet? So this, this area where the parking area is going is being raised up. I mean, currently is lower than the adjacent property, so we're kind of bringing it back even with that property. So the system includes a holding area here, which is for the roof leaders and the flow off the building, goes into a yard drain, into a water quality unit in the middle of the parking lot, and then this whole area, she's shaded here, is underground infiltration. So all the drainage will be handled underground. The water quality unit is actually depressed, so there's a low spot. The water can surcharge into the parking lot to handle up to the 100-year storm. Any design storms over that, basically would flow off the site as it does now, to Bond Avenue, so that there isn't any increase in flooding at this site.
I, I like that, underground infiltration. It's much, much, much better than open.
Yes. The site's tight, so we have room for open.
I understand that, but I like it. Other questions from the board?
And just to add, some DPW did review it, and they did send an email that it was to their liking.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. This is not a hearing, right? This is just a site plan. Re-queue.
This is, this is a hearing.
This is a hearing, okay. So we'll open it up to the public. Anyone wishes to comment on this? Sir?
Ralph Page, 306 Prospect Street.
Ralph.
All the way up.
We have an aisle for you.
I figured I was loud enough. It's okay. I'm just curious, you said that there was a small detention back there that you're going to be filling in where the drainage is. What's the elevation change from the dip that it is now to where it's going to be?
Existing grade, let me just find the existing contour here.
You still there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay.
The existing grade in this area is at 220. I'm going to lower it in the middle here, so maybe down to 2,000.5 in that area. And the proposed grade of the parking lot. Spot grades in this area are 21.3, so...
About two feet?
Foot and a half. Two feet, that's correct.
So you'd be looking from the finished grade to that, to water cable would be closer to four feet, four and a half feet.
Yeah, we're required to have four for the separation to the groundwater, that's why it's being raised.
That's why I was asking.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else from the public who'd like to comment? Hearing none, I'll take it back to the board. Any additional questions or comments?
No.
Hearing none. And I think you've had a chance to look over quickly the comments that are from the, our staff. Basically, there are some changes that, on the cover page, and a few other things that we've already dealt with the size of the structure. I think changing the frontage is the main thing. And we talked about, are there trees on the site right now?
There are trees.
Yeah. Do you have a landscape plan in there?
Yes, we do.
If you could go over that for us, roughly.
So this is the landscaping plan that was proposed by, again, his name is John Henson. He's a licensed landscape architect. So what we have here is we have actually trees along Shaker Avenue and Bond Avenue, and then we have shrubs and bushes along the, the property line with the parking lot for the animal hospital, as well as the animal hospital parking lot. And that ball then laid out, and they're all planted, and that's something I did go over with the planning director with. There was a comment made about the particular type of species on this particular part of the plan, so I went back to the landscape architect based upon the comments from our planning director, and did change those for her recommendation.
Okay. And there is a question here about the operating and maintenance plan for the stormwater management?
Yes.
Has that been approved by DPW?
Yes, it has. It's been submitted to them, I assume, by the planning department.
Yeah.
Was that the stormwater?
Yeah, the O and M plan.
Yeah, everything, he was happy.
He's happy with it all. Okay, so that, that's taken care of. Any other questions, board? Hearing none, I will accept a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. I would entertain a motion to approve the site plan, subject to the administrative change on frontage on the, on the cover sheet, and we have the other approvals that we need.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Okay. So the site plan is approved.
So you're basically addressing the frontage?
Yeah. Just a minor change.
And everything else is...
Yeah.
So we could resubmit the A and R with the title and this plan with the, with the frontage. I'm assuming it's an added amount from Bond Avenue.
Yeah, that's exactly it. Okay. It, it doesn't affect the ability to do the A and R, okay? So it's approved, we, I can't actually sign it until we get the new front page, and then we can sign it, and we'll be on our way. Okay? Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you much. Good luck with the business.
Thank you very much.
In the building. Okay. Back up to number seven. Okay. Sign 2018-1999 Shaker Road, Hampden Engineering Corporation, request by applicant for approval of temporary sign at 99 Shaker Road, assessors parcel ID 28-1-0, industrial zoning district. Applicant is Michael Flynn, 7 Sound Breeze Ave, Groton, Connecticut.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We, for how long? How long do you...
We'd like to have it for a year if we could, and use it as needed.
Okay, could you come up here and just talk into the microphone, because everything is supposed, is connected, and if you don't speak into the microphone, people, when they watch this, won't know what you're saying.
Could you tell me your name again, please?
Stan Woodcup.
Thank you.
So you, you want to have an employment sign out there for a period of a year?
May, as needed.
As needed. That, that's a long time.
Yeah, it's a long time.
I, I would accept a, a motion to approve it for six months and, subject to renewal. Okay? Would that be...
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Good. Thank you.
And thank you for coming in, because there's a lot of businesses that put signs up that don't come in. So thank you.
Number eight, sign 2018-2061 North Main Street, People's United Bank, request by applicant for approval of a replacement monument sign at 61 North Main Street, assessors parcel ID 26-147-0, in the commercial zoning district. Applicant, Pro Sign Inc., 60 Weathersfield Drive, Plantsville, Connecticut.
Hi, Dan.
Hello. We're up to the People's United Bank signs.
Ah.
Is someone here from, for that? Before we get into this specific sign, there's a question about the number of signs. You're allowed one directory sign or pole sign and one sign on the building, I believe. And you're asking for three signs.
Yes, there's, I'm going to just open up mine. There's two existing, existing signs there already. So these are all like-for-like replacements.
Mm-hmm.
The monument sign is a reface of just the panel for the People's Bank.
Okay.
There's other tenants, I believe, listed below it. And then there's two existing Farmington Bank signs on the building, and we are just replacing a like-for-like, just rebranding for People's Bank.
Connie, can you fill us in on your, your concerns about this?
Well, I think perhaps previously, when the banks that had been practicing, maybe there was a variance granted so that they could have three signs. But now that we're revisiting it, and I don't know, and we didn't find, I don't believe Tracy found a variance, and the applicant can provide a variance, but under the, the current zoning bylaw, you can see, based on my notes that I provided to you, you may have one or the other. So even though in the past, there were two wall signs in the, attached to the, the structure in the, within the peak, you know, here we have a, a, a new business or a business that's going in that's acquired the, the earlier bank, but it's not, it doesn't conform with the zoning ordinance or the bylaw, the zoning bylaw. So we have a situation where we need to correct a problem, a past mistake, unless the variance can be produced, or unless the board recommends that the applicant seek a variance from the zoning board's appeals for the additional signage.
Russ, what's your feeling on this one?
I mean, we're replacing one sign for one sign.
Yeah.
I mean, essentially.
Yeah.
And I, and although I do appreciate your comments that it, but it's a residential district, the way the building is set up, it faces, it essentially faces Bentley's.
Right.
And the, the backside of it is also a professional building on North Main Street. There's woods that go to the, to Elm Street. It's a tasteful-looking building. I mean, it was well done. So I don't really, so I don't, I kind of discount the visual clutter and the detracting of the ambience of the, ambiance of the town village. So I, I'm in favor of replacing one for one, I mean, it's what they're trying to do.
So you do have to look at, excuse me, I'm sorry, you do have to refer to Section 5.82, commercial district sign, shall only be permitted in a commercial district subject to the following conditions, the number, there shall be, there shall not be more than one attached building sign per building occupants' commercial use. Two, a commercial building housing more than one occupant's commercial use is entitled to only one ground sign or one tenant's directory sign. So my recommendations is that the planning board comply with the bylaw stipulating the applicant is entitled to only one ground sign or one tenant's directory sign. We have, in my comments about the visual clutter and the residential C zoning district, that, those are simply observations that I make as a professional planner, in my opinion of signs actually being a detraction as opposed to an enhancement, because you can have too many signs and people don't see the signs anymore, they tend to ignore them. One sign is good enough to denote a business, especially one that's on the main corridor and one that, that has a ground sign that actually exceeds the maximum square, 40 square feet and is 42.5 feet. So, you know, in the past practice, things have been done, but that doesn't mean we need to repeat our past practices.
Let's move the question, please.
Okay, which sign are we talking, we have three applications, yes.
Yeah, we have three applications. So the ground sign is seeing the directory of tenants, is 42.5 feet. That would be A, that would be your first one, item A. I believe the way I was looking at the way they came to me, you had A, B, C. And again, there shall not be more than one attached building sign per building occupants' commercial use. So there are two.
The first one is the, the sign over the directory. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The second one is for one sign, this is, this is a pole sign as well.
No, I thought that was, I think... No, I thought that was, I think there are two within the peak of the structure. Isn't that correct, based on the applications that I had, unless I didn't get?
Okay. Is that?
Yes, there's two building signs.
Okay, over the two entrances?
Yes.
Over the two entrances. And again, we've been through this a couple times. Usually, if there's more than one entrance, you're allowed to have, we've been approving signs for that. So do I have a motion on the second sign?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then we have a third sign, which is also attached to the building. Do I have a motion on that one?
Can you show me the visual of that one?
You're going to have to send them to the ZBA, because the current bylaw, the bylaw says there shall not be more than one attached building sign per building occupants commercial use. So you've exceeded, you're at, you're at the maximum number of signs that this applicant has had. If they want to have the additional sign, even though this is a replacement sign for a business, I would urge you descendants to zoning board's appeals to make that decision because they are the governing authority.
Not knowing how these signs, recalling how these signs were approved originally, we're replacing a sign with a sign. I don't see the need to go to the ZBA for that.
So you may be opening your door to an appeal.
That's fine.
I'll move to approve.
Do I have a second? Anybody?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Name.
Name. One opposed. That passes. And it is subject to appeal, so there's a 30 days, I believe, appeal period.
No, no, 20 days.
20 days. Okay.
Thank you very much.
I would have to go back and look at the minutes of the meeting where that was approved a couple years ago.
Exactly. I'd like to know the history and how we got from point A to point B.
Yeah.
It may be legit.
Right.
Without knowing that history, it was hard for me to go in favor of it. But I agree, it's been there already, so.
Yeah. Okay, so I need the three.
And I'm kind of like not wanting to know if it was previously done by another board.
Yeah.
Why overrule what they?
Yeah, I mean, it's an existing sign.
Yeah. If I knew, I'd feel a lot more comfortable. You know, oh, now I understand why they made that decision.
Okay, what's next?
Cornerstone Church.
Someone here from Cornerstone? Welcome.
There's nothing really to read, right? So we've been here.
This is a continuation?
Yeah.
Okay. And again, I don't know if you've seen the comments from the staff on this one, but there were some concerns.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, could you have the gentleman stand up at the mic, please?
Uh, can you stand at the mic? The rest?
Thank you.
Okay, the, our director has determined that project applications still fall short of her recommendations for compliance. Have you had a discussion with her at all?
Nope.
Okay. Connie, can you comment on, expand on that, aside from the lighting plan?
Sure. So you presented a concept plan for the garage storage, right? So you need to present what it is that you intend to construct. You can't present the concept plan. You have to present a rendering of the structure that you're going to be installing on the ground, as well as the dimensions, that the accurate dimensions that this particular structure is going to be comprised of. The height, the linear, the front, the width and the length of the building, and also the materials that you're going to be using, the number of garage doors. And while I appreciate the concept drawing, you haven't given us any definitive information. And that's part of what the planning board looks at. Because while we appreciate your ideas, the board needs to see what's going to go on the ground and be installed by your contractor.
Mr.?
Identify yourself again.
Josh Eldridge, Pastor Josh Eldridge, Cornerstone Church. As I stated, Connie, in the last meeting, in order to move forward with this and get all this stuff done that you need, and I, we did go ahead and move forward with that, but it would be kind of step two, because if it gets approved here, then we can go ahead and pay these people to build the structure. Here's what we did go ahead and do. These are the architectural plans from them. And in order to get the turnaround time ready for tonight, it was, it was pretty tough, but from last meeting to this meeting, you can see they were just stamped in order to get them here for tonight. Those are all the dimensions and details.
So you're, yeah. So you've got basically, I'm looking at this and I'm seeing some differences here. You've got two, on page two, it shows two garage doors on the front wall, which I assume faces the parking lot.
Correct.
Okay. On the cover, I see a rendering with one garage door. Which one is it going to be? This is showing?
I think this is just their local design.
Oh, okay. So what we're looking at then is the two garage doors facing the parking lot. Do you show paving on this one?
Yes.
You do?
Yeah. Originally, on the original plans, there's paving actually that's approved all the way to about 25 feet off the line.
Okay.
So this is all paved area. We have not the need for it now, so we prefer the grass until it's needed.
Okay. And I see your planting plan there.
Yep.
Shown there. There's a question about the lighting plan being inadequate. Can you comment on that, Connie?
They gave us a tear sheet. They think it was a lighting plan, because I believe our neighbors across the street, the butters across the street, as well as adjacent to the property, were concerned about light spill, which I think you wanted to, based on my understanding of your request, you wanted to see how much light spill was going to be trespassing onto the neighboring properties.
Right.
And we didn't get, and you can see from the comments, that's what a lighting plan looks like. I mean, I know it's for another business entity, but you should be looking at something that shows, like, like the folks that presented for the Shaker Road Legal Office. He did a great light plan. And we're just not seeing it from the church in a, we need to see somebody can do that so that you know how many, again, you know how it is affecting the neighbors, because there was so much concern that was brought to your attention.
Yeah. I sent you, I'm Tracy, two lighting sheets. I mean, number one, it's two lights, and they're both low-oddage LEDs. Here's the photometrics that we talked about from the last meeting on both lights. I got a Google image sent to me with some, a lighting plan for, as an example. But again, large facility, huge project, far, far beyond just two lights on a garage.
Where are the lights on the garage going to be? They're not shown on the plan.
One's facing the church building and one is right above the door that, again, faces away from neighbors.
Okay. And the one on, facing the church is going to be between the two garage doors, basically? Yeah, again, I, we really need something that shows these things, okay? Because it's not, they're not shown here.
I don't know. Here's the foot handle.
Yeah, but there's no light shown on the building. Okay?
That's because that's from.
Right. But the point, the point is, we need to memorialize all this on paper. Okay? We really do. I think we've been through that.
Yeah, we have. There's, there's been 95 copies made of this document for this board.
Yeah.
For the garage.
There's nothing showing where the lights are going to be on here.
I submitted those earlier with some 3D drawings, preliminary.
That was preliminary? This is, this is, this is the final design? I also have to add, how are you going to get electricity to the building?
Underground.
Underground?
Yep.
Okay. Now, these are the things that need to be put down on paper before we can do an approval. I'm not trying to stonewall you or anything, but we need to have this stuff so that, you know, 10 years from now, somebody questions any of this, says you've got too many lights on there, we've got what you actually proposed to us. We really need definitive, good plans that show all this stuff and shows where the utilities are going and so on. That's standard for a plan.
For a garage?
This is, this is bigger than a garage. This is a significant structure.
Well, it's a commercial, you know, not, I'm sorry, this is, this is not a residential garage, this is a commercial garage. So the standards of performance are, are different from if, if someone were putting their private garage up. And even then, our building inspector would be looking for an electrical plan for construction purposes. So, you know, it is, it is a garage. It has been going on for a long time.
A long time.
I think that, yeah. And I, I think that if you, you know, if you, and I go back to hiring a professional, somebody who knows how to present these plans. The time that you've spent and you've invested in, in coming back and forth before the board has not been time well spent. And that's why we encourage people to present drawings that are stamped by a licensed engineer, it's somebody who knows what they're doing and how to draw plans. And my humblest apologies, most sincere apologies, but it's not, it's not accurate. And we're looking for accuracy.
But why bring that up today and not in any of the submissions before?
It was brought up at the last time you were here. Clearly, it was brought up the last time you were here. And, which is why you came back with a site plan that chose the site, or most of the site, and shows the landscape plan, which we didn't have last time. I think you finally positioned, decided, arrived at where you're going to put the final position of the, the garage is going to be, which is good. You're showing the paving. You're not showing any utilities. You're not showing where the lights are going to be positioned on here, so that if, you know, just as we went out there recently and realized that the landscape plan that was submitted way back when was never executed, we don't want to have to go out there five years from now and discover that there are six lights on the building when we said there were only going to be two. And we, you know, unless we've got that stuff memorialized on paper, we have nothing to go on. So it's important that a site plan be complete, okay? Really, and that really be complete, and that everything that's going to be there is shown, so that when it goes up, we know that what was proposed is what was actually built. I mean, this is, this is standard, okay? If you look at the plans that were submitted for the building we talked about on Shaker Road, you'll see that they are much more complete than what you've got here. That's the standard that we're looking for. So I'm going to, first of all, open up to the, the, audience, if anyone wants to comment further on this at this point. If not, I'll take it back to the board. I'm going to suggest we continue it to, can you have something by the 30th? Or do you want to wait until November 20th?
If I may, pardon me, I think that, I think that you want to continue this to November, want the applicant to have time to seek a professional engineer who can assist them with drawings and renderings that can be brought to the planning board for review and approval, so as not to belabor this again and again.
Well, yeah, I turn to the, I turn to the applicant and say, when do you think you can have what we're asking for? Two weeks?
What are the schedules for the November meetings?
November 20th. Our next meeting is October 30th. We can't meet on the 4th because it's election day. So the next one after October 30th will be November 20th.
October 30th, yeah.
Okay, I'll ask for a motion to continue to October 30th.
So just so everybody's clear. So Connie, the applicant, the applicant is hoping to be on the October 30th agenda. So when would you need their plans for you to review with them and make sure that what they have is sufficient for the planning board to actually act?
I'm not able to come back to work until I'm released by the doctor. So I can't guarantee when I will be back in the office.
I think we ought to do it for the 20th. How do you feel?
Well, as you know, you set the meeting so I can't be here for the 30th.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, that, yeah, it would help. But really, I think it's going to take more time, and I think that.
I just don't want us spinning our wheels.
Yeah.
I'm sure you don't want to spin your wheels.
This is six months.
So I guess my preference is that you take the extra time, make sure it's done correctly. You know, meet, I'm sure someone, even George, could give you a recommendation on someone.
No, I can't.
Well, someone, you can get a recommendation on who has done some.
No, no.
I took that off the table. Okay. You should get a recommendation from someone on how to do it correctly, so that it's accurate.
You know what I might do? Give him, if you would, a copy of one of the plans tonight from the Shaker Road Office Building, only to give them an idea at least of what we're looking for. Not that we're recommending that this applicant seek that particular professional, but at least when he takes it to somebody, he can say, can you do this? You know, and what's it going to cost me to do that? And at least give him concrete, tangible examples to take. And if someone has an extra 11 by 17, especially for the light plan and site plan, just rip those two out of your package. And again, I think that'll give them a better idea of what we're looking for.
If you'd rather email it to me, if you need your copy, then.
I think it's easier, I think, if you get the hard copy. I can give you a copy here of 124 Shaker. Email them, sorry, Tracy?
I don't need to keep copies of those.
And as we, I said when we spoke, you might want to try to reach out to your congregation and see if somebody knows somebody who, you know, you've got a lot of people that you can draw on.
So I'll move to continue the hearing to November 20th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Continue to November 20th at 6:00 PM. What's next?
604 North Main. Case site, 2018-04-604 North Main Street. Request by applicant for a site plan review to construct a dental office building at .32 cluster minus acres located at 604 North Main Street. Assessors parcel ID 1A-94-321, Business Zoning District. Applicant is Andrew Bonavita, 84 Woodley Road, Longsfield, Mass. This is continued from September 25th.
That's where they used to have the greenhouse. That's where they used to have the greenhouse. Okay, so we're opening the public hearing. Would you like to introduce yourself and tell us what you're planning on doing?
Hi, my name is Carmelo Bonavita. I live at one eighteen Southbrook Road, East Long Meadow, Massachusetts. Been there twenty years. Also a business owner in East Long Meadow. Our business called Coast to Coast, which is known as Villa Noplatano. We've been open almost twenty years there, and I'm here supporting my brother Andrew, which is a dentist, and would like to open his office in East Long Meadow that is currently in Long Meadow, Massachusetts. Thank you.
Philip Burdick, Five Ridgewood Terrace, project architect, project landscape architect.
Feel free to raise the microphone.
I live at eighty-four Woodley Road, Long Meadow, Mass. I've been in practice for about twenty, twenty-eight years now at the same address, one twenty-three Dwight Road in Long Meadow, and I'm looking to build a building at six oh four North Main Street so I can relocate my practice.
Okay, so, show us, show us your plan.
Project summary, it's an existing site on North Main Street, which is a business, business-owned. There was a previous building there, which was demolished two years ago in anticipating of building another building, which was then withdrawn, so now the site is now blank. There is still a remaining parking lot toward the rear of the site. It's a corner lot. We're proposing to build a thirty-four hundred square foot, one-story professional office building, similar to the other proposal, in which case about half of the building will be located by Mr. Bonavita's dental practice, the other half would be some other sort of professional office, either legal or medical of some sort. We're providing, the lot coverage is within the zoning requirements, the parking also meets the zoning requirements. The project's been reviewed by several departments. There were some pending issues, as you're familiar with the, the statutory requirements for the submittal process, there are a number of items that we've requested waivers on specifically due to the fact that it's an existing site that's been previously developed. So, obviously, things like soil conditions were, have been modified significantly from the original, what would have been the original soil conditions. Building that was there has been removed and filled in with what was soon to be gravel, the existing rear of the site. These are some dotted lines on here, existing shovels, or the existing paved areas, we'd actually be removing some of the paved area to provide the required buffers. There won't be any exterior lighting, so we're asking for a waiver on the lighting plan, other than lighting that's mounted on the building, that's going to be low wattage LED downlight type, night, dark sky type fixtures. We are providing an entrance, you know, at least an entrance appearance to the front, but we anticipate that most of the entrances will be, entrance units will be from the back of the building. Let's open up the questions at this point, I think.
Can you show us the buffer zone between the building and the residential? You do a butt residential zone?
No, it's business on the side and also business on the rear.
Oh, it is business on the...
Yeah, it's residence located there, but it's a business zone property, there's existing fencing that the butters have provided, the stockade solid fence. I should show you the building elevations as well.
Yeah, that would be good.
The buildings are traditionally, buildings would be a traditionally styled building. Similar project would be at the end of Sumner Avenue where it divides, in Springfield there is a former Jim Dandy Chicken place that was redeveloped, that's the architect for that project, such as, you know, traditionally styled. We request that, you know, usually for this process, we're asked to submit material samples. It's still under negotiation, we have not, you know, signed up a contractor, but we're looking at a design-build type project, so we're looking at some sort of linear type clapboard siding, whether it's a composite material or vinyl or not, you know, it's a hundred percent sure on that yet, so. But it's a pitch groove structure, asphalt, sheen roof, concrete foundation, we'll be putting in a basement, so. I don't know if there's any questions on elevations, et cetera.
Are you actually going to have two stories, or is that...
There's some attic space which we may use for storage, but it's not going to be just any kind of rental space, so.
So, it's going to be kind of like the, the building we have on Maple Street?
The dormers, the dormers that you show on are primary for aesthetic reasons, so...
Yeah, I'm thinking of the little plant building on Maple Street. I don't know if you're familiar with that.
He may be familiar with it.
Yeah, it's going to look similar to that.
Similar, nice, right.
That, that looks really nice, actually.
Thank you.
It's an enhanced neighborhood.
We try.
And what, can you address the stormwater?
Yes, I'm also a registered landscape architect, though. We are licensed to do stormwater calculations, they've been submitted to the Department of Public Works. Most recently, we've submitted these actually calculations based on, you know, intensity, duration, a hundred-year flood. At a preliminary meeting with the, which included the DPW, they requested that we not drain into their system, so we're providing two leaching catch basins, so we're going to, and also a drywall to handle one of the downspouts, so that doesn't run across the parking lot. And we designed that for a hundred-year, a hundred-year storm. There would be potential for some acquisition of water, you know, some, some, some puddling of water around the catch basins at a hundred-year storm level, for approximately two to four inches deep, that would probably, the duration, that would probably be less than an hour for, for the percolating to the soil, based on the information that we have. If it goes above that level, like if you had a two-hundred-year or five-hundred-year storm, the next elevation would be actually the threshold of the building, so we're not anticipating that we fill up the basement with water. So, we feel that, we feel confident that, that we've addressed that issue. The Department of Public Works has requested that the, that the, that the, an engineer have, provide those drainage calculations. I have not received any specific questions about the drainage calculations, or their accuracy, or how we arrived at those figures. If it were, you know, if it were to, if it were a matter of holding up the project, I think I'd confer with the owner, and they'd be willing to say, okay, well, we'll resubmit those, you know, we'll resubmit those calculations, have them reviewed by an engineer, if that's, if that's the only imp, you know, impediment to the project. There were another, like I said, another, some other waiver issues about requirements for issues like wildlife habitat, et cetera, which is part of your, you know, it's part of your bylaws as far as review process. And again, we've asked for waivers on some of those issues, based on the fact, there was a building there already, it's already been commercially developed, you know, we don't, we don't feel that those necessarily are a problem, but we'd happy, be happy to address any of those issues that you have questions about.
Have we received any comments from DPW on this one yet?
Just, yeah, at the very end of the day.
Two hours ago.
Okay, and what was the comment?
Requested that...
The request for having reviewed, drainage talks reviewed. And you have, have you...
They requested that the site plan be provided by an engineer, too. It's my understanding, according to bylaws in section three, what says plans that also includes architect, landscape architect.
Yeah, we, we would be the ones who would decide on, on site plan, but DPW is the one that has to sign off on, on the drainage.
That's correct. I understand that.
And without, without their sign off, we can't proceed, okay, basically. So, what I would recommend that you should do would be to sit down with DPW, okay, and make sure you understand their concerns and answer their concerns, because, again, we, we will not act until we get a positive recommendation from DPW, because we're not in a position to review those things ourselves as, as a planning board.
Yeah, so I understand. We've addressed several of their concerns. One of their concerns was scale the drawing, which we, which we modified per their request.
Right.
They had a question about, they put an engineer's scale on the paper, and they were concerned about the way that it measured up. I mean, I haven't used scales like that for twenty-five, since we've been doing CAD for twenty years, but we resized the drawing actually for them by point zero zero three, so that we come, you know, so they could put the scale on.
Yeah.
But, you know, I offered to, any kind of conventional questions we've asked, we've responded to them. Once we put the details on a separate suite, which was their request, we complied with that. I think they had a question about, they wanted the, the entrance aisle to be twenty-four feet wide, so we've modified the outline of the building to comply with that. We've submitted the original drawings like five weeks ago, and this last request came in, like I said, two hours, two hours before this meeting started. So, I don't necessarily agree that I'm not qualified to provide drainage calculations, but if that's going to, you know, if that's going to ease their concerns, I'd be willing to, you know, we'd be willing to like...
You need to talk to DPW on that, okay?
I understand.
They, they're the ones who have to agree that the drainage and such is, is acceptable.
I'm not disagreeing.
Okay? And so, I would, we can't vote on this, I don't think we should vote on this tonight without DPW's recommendation.
What I would like to address, though, is if you have any other concerns, because if we come back to the next meeting and say, oh, well, we left something out last time, and now we're...
Yeah, I understand.
It's going to be November twentieth, then it's going to be...
So, I take it to the board, does anyone have any questions or concerns?
I, I do.
I'm taking to the board first. Anyone here?
Yep, I know, I just didn't want you to miss me.
Yeah, I won't.
My issue's drainage, and we'll wait to see what DPW says after they get the request taken care of.
Okay. Connie, your comments?
Yes, the general note at tree detail on the landscape plan sheet LA two, the applicant is to revise the note to read, any and all changes from this standard detail sheet is to be approved by the town of East Long Meadow Planning Board. And the sign detail, I understand, because I really couldn't understand Mr. Burdick, I understand he's going to be submitting the application for this sign, and that'll be considered at the next meeting.
Yes, okay. Can I ask one question about that, though?
Sure.
There was previously a ground sign there, the poster there, but the sign's been removed.
Right.
My understanding is, you know, from the zoning one, it says it has to be twenty-five feet back, which means the ground sign would be actually inside the building, which is not going to be very effective. So, we're thinking that the only way that we can really get a ground sign is, as the planning director mentioned earlier, is that we would have to go to the zoning board of appeals, because we would not be, we're in compliance with the required setback, and the existing sign, as an existing non-conforming, is pretty much expired at this point.
Yeah, definitely expired. So, the thing, the thing is...
So, what we asked was, was the zoning interpretation from the building department, as we're supposed to, we asked for two separate ones, one for the building sign, one for the ground sign, and I think, you know, if, if that's the case, where we would have to go to the zoning board of appeals, I think that we would either defer on that, or, or just, you know, not, not request that.
Well, I, correct me if I'm wrong, Connie, but I think the proper procedure would be to submit the application for the, the sign permit, and we would then have to deny it before it goes to the ZBA.
Okay.
Because you're appealing our decision.
He can submit concurrently, and depending on what, you can make it subject to approval by the zoning board of appeals, you can have all the conditions in place, and likewise, the zoning board of appeals is going to be looking for your recommendation for the sign, the sign design and setback. So, we'll do it concurrently.
Okay.
And that way, instead of holding things up, we'll be able to move this project forward.
Okay.
Yeah, we, or we just defer and not, not have a ground sign at this point.
That's, 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 that's your, your call.
Yes, understood.
But, anything else from the board? Open up to the public, any comments or questions? Sir?
Ralph Page, three oh six Prospect Street. I noticed from the diagram, you have two trees out in front of North Main Street.
Yes.
What type of trees are they, and what's the elevation that the branches are going to be up? I just want to make sure that if you're coming out of Brayburn, you're not looking at a tree, you're able to see the traffic.
That's a good question, yeah. It's a re-flower pair trees, which is, you know, fairly uniformly shaped, street trees, used quite frequently, and it doesn't grow particularly large. We'd be happy to make sure that the branches, usually the sight, sight line considers to be something that would be five, five feet when someone's sitting in a car, so we would definitely want to plant trees that were, you know, have branches above five feet, so. And they will be set back, they will be set back about halfway between the, the building. There's about ten feet, roughly, of a tree belt from the curb to the property line, then there's another twenty-five feet setback, so we're going to be a good, at least twenty to twenty-five feet back from the street with those trees, so.
Okay.
But, yeah, that's a good comment, and we certainly will take that into consideration, so.
I ask the question I have here, is there a sidewalk in front of that building?
No.
No. So, you've got a walkway going from the door to nowhere.
Well, close to the street, so.
To the street.
We'll put a sidewalk in, and then we'll meet the sidewalk. If we want, we can take it to the curb, but now, you know, we have to get DPW's approval for that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just wondering why, why that is, because people are going to be parking in back and going in through the back door.
Well, the only code requires two means of egress. There's going to be a second egress, and that has to be, you know, it has to be accessible to a public, to a public right of way.
Okay, okay. Very good. Explains that. Any other questions from the, from the audience? Hearing none, take it back to the board. I think we need to continue this to the thirtieth, so they can resolve the DPW issues, and we can get comments from them? Okay? So...
Well, no, they're saying they can't really, they can't do a pending approval, they need DPW...
No, we, we need DPW's comments.
We can talk about that later.
Yeah, we've been, we, we don't do, generally, we do not do contingent approvals.
Ah, the DPW calls up two hours before the meeting, he comes up with another request that he's been calling them. He's been, he's been on the phone, emailing, for four weeks now. This is, this is unusual, a DPW comes up with something like this. I mean, I don't know, maybe this is a different...
They did one of the calculations two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago. They didn't always submit the sign. We submitted them two weeks ago.
Please, one at a time, okay?
I'm sorry.
It just gets frustrating.
It's frustrating.
I understand, I understand.
We're working with the town.
I understand your frustration.
You've got to follow the rules, so. I understand the rules.
I, I understand.
You don't call two hours before a meeting and give you something you can't deliver.
I understand.
That's wrong.
I understand your frustration, and you're talking to us about this, you're not talking to DPW about it. They're the ones who did this.
Last time we saw DPW, well, DPW wasn't here, but they...
No, they don't normally come to these meetings, okay? They...
I think we should be able to get, I have to, you know, get this resolved by the thirtieth.
Okay, that would, that would be great, because we want to move this along, that lot's been empty far too long, we've seen some crazy proposals for it, this is a great one, okay?
Beautiful building, design.
It's going to, going to improve the looks of North Main Street.
I just want, I just want to clarify, though, that, you know, because one of the other issues is that, they, I spoke to them on the phone on Friday, and you said that they would prefer that the site plan be stamped by an engineer, but, you know, an engineer is not going to stamp someone else's drawings.
I, I understand that.
But they said, he told me that it was up to you, it was up to the planning board to decide whether or not you accept the site plan from, from our architect, and I believe that, you know, section three under plans says specifically architect.
It does, and, and I think for this site plan, it's, I don't see that as an issue.
Yeah, we're not doing anything complicated.
But, but I do see that we need to get DPW's comments, we really do, because...
I understand.
We, we make it a rule that we get comments from the key town departments, which is fire, police, and DPW, okay? Because the police have to be happy that they can protect the place, fire has to be happy, and they can get a truck in there if they need to, and the DPW is very concerned about stormwater because of the new stormwater regulations, which you're well aware of, that put the town at risk if, if we do something bad, if something bad happens with stormwater.
Understood.
Okay? To the point where they're now telling us to break up our leaves instead of leaving them on the lawn, because it causes nutrient flow to this...
I fully understand where you're coming from. I think you said the last meeting, you've been doing this for thirty years, I haven't been doing it for four.
Yeah, so...
I understand, yes, it's not my first time.
Okay. So, we'll continue, I need a motion to continue to the thirtieth at six o'clock.
I'm not going to be here, so. Motion to continue.
Seven seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
Is there anything else besides the stormwater calculations that we need to provide?
Connie?
So, if I may add a little bit more, there was a demolition of a structure on that site, and sometimes when there's a demolition, you, the integrity of the soil is, is disturbed, and so we don't know when they did the demo, where they may have buried, and so the, the DPW wants to make sure when they did that demolition, that the, the drainage can be, can, 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 can handle the, any type of peak flow, and, and make sure that everything drains properly on the site. Again, it's a compromised, it's a compromised site, and it's not just, you know, soil, there's probably some other material in there mixed in with the soil after the demo, so I think they're just being a little extra cautious, and you also might want to be grateful for that, because once you start to do the excavation, you want to make sure you're building on solid ground. on solid ground, so.
So, the DPW has requested a soil, a test pit? Is that what you're saying?
No, well, they're looking at the drain, they wanted the drainage, you know, they want the calculation for the stormwater, and generally, they do some test pits whenever they do something, you know, whenever they're, because they want to make sure that the soil percolates, so.
I'm suggesting that they work with DPW and get what DPW asks for, and we get a recommendation from DPW, so that that's done the proper way, okay?
Yeah, you know, and I think it makes it, in the long run, it'll be good for, for Dr. Bonavita, as well as, as well as the town.
And we, yes, and we would also, I would appreciate if you would send us an email with what you just said about pruning the trees?
Sure.
So that we have that in the record as well?
I can put it on the drawings.
If you can put it on the drawing, that'd be great.
No branches below five feet.
Yeah, okay. Again, as I said to the previous applicant, if it isn't on paper, it never happened, okay? You know that, okay? And, and so, and seriously, you know, we get a new board here five years from now. They're not going to know what was said at the meeting. They're going to look at the plans that are in the file, okay?
Understood.
And if somebody complains that the trees are blocking views, if it's not on the plan, it's not on the plan, so.
Yeah, I don't know if there was a demolition plan in place when they took this...
I do not know. That would not be a planning board issue, that would be a...
Yeah, 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 that's actually a board, that's actually the building commissioner.
Building commissioner.
Yeah, we opened up a building in Springfield, and you could tell you all about the site problems.
Yeah, you know what?
It's not my first really.
I mean, that was, that was an ancient building, so I don't know what was in it. Anyway, okay, so we voted to continue to the 30th, and we will do that, and hopefully we'll get you moving, okay?
Thank you.
I mean, it is a process, you want to understand. Anything else on the agenda?
They need like a drainage report, right?
Yeah.
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 Move to adjourn.
You have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.